We'll come back into open session and if the city attorney can report out for the closed session.
The council did meet in closed session and discussed two matters, the Jackton Golf Course lease and the Yattagar litigation matter. There's no action to report out at this time and staff was given direction.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the regular agenda for tonight's meeting, which is the November 12th meeting of the Ripon City Council. Flag salute. Mr. Eucher, can you lead us in the salute?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could remain standing for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we, we come here before, we come here today, Lord, and we just, we thank you for how richly you have blessed us and provided for us in such a wonderful town as Ripon, Lord. We pray that you will guide directions and decisions and hearts, Lord, here tonight. We thank you for all those that serve and are willing to serve, both in our military and overseas, but here locally in our fire and police and first responders, Lord. Just continue to, to be here and present in Ripon. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Roll call.
Councilmember Mike Rastusia.
Present.
Dean Eucher.
Here.
Daniel DeGraff.
Here.
Mayor Vice Mayor Jake Parks.
Here.
Mayor Leo Zubor.
Present. The next item on the agenda is public discussion. This is the time when members of the audience who are in attendance can address the council on any item that is not on the agenda. If you would like to address the council, if you could come to the podium, give your name and address. There's a five-minute limit.
I don't need that long. Ike, my business is 140 South Walnut, Suite D. I own Mac Pie Antiques. I haven't been here for a long time, and the reason why I'm here again is because I would really like to save this city of Ripon a lawsuit. I had another customer fall on my street, taken by ambulance. Again, this is the third time. I've been in business seven years, and I think it's three times too many, and I'm sure this council agrees. The, the street has a hill, and I think it was like maybe a year and a half ago, maybe two, that you resurfaced from Acacia toward the fire department and stopped a block and a half from my shop, which is on the corner of Walnut and First. And I had a thousand people in my shop a week ago Saturday for my Christmas open house. Lots of tax dollars came to the city. Let me tell you, it was a splendid day, but I worried that the time before, the attorney called me from the woman that fell, and I assured her I did not own the street. I love my building. I love being in Ripon, and I just think that that street really needs to be addressed. It just needs to be graded, just cut it off. Sorry, Daniel. But anyway, so that's, that's just the only thing I would like to bring to attention. I just don't want to see anybody. She did go to the hospital. Fortunately, she was an elderly woman. She didn't break any bones, but she was bruised from head to toe. of Ripon, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we will move. Approval of the minute for the meeting of October 8th. No pictures? Okay. Probably for the better. Our next item is the approval of the agenda for tonight. At this point, is there anyone wishing to pull any items from the consent calendar?
Nope.
I have one. 1.3D. Anybody else? Then I would accept a, a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Next item is the consent calendar. Would be appropriate to approve the consent calendar as amended.
So moved.
Second.
You can have it.
My question about 1.3D has to do, first of all, there was an item that wasn't included, but I see it's here. And I got it earlier, so I read it. I guess my question is, was the building itself also subject to the habitat requirement?
Yeah, it was. So the building took up about two acres, so we paid a habitat fee on that two acres, and now I think the parking lot's roughly about three acres. And so we will be paying the habitat mitigation fee on that as well.
Okay. And is, that comes from us, not from the grant money?
That does come from us.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve item 1.3D?
So moved.
Moving on. Oh, we have the proclamation. Do we have someone here to accept it? Seeing none. No. We'll get it to them? Well?
Traffic.
I guess. All right, moving on. Item 2A, ordinance number 891, second reading and adoption of the ordinance dealing with regulation of sidewalk vendors. Mr. Zeitewart, is this yours?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers. You know, as the last meeting, we did the first reading and introduction of the ordinance. Council did provide a little bit of direction, a couple minor changes that they'd requested in the ordinance, and that was in the redline version that was in your packet. One additional item came up in the meantime from that, and we did add, or we are proposing to add a little bit of language to clarify an umbrella and exactly the height limits and the size limits that an umbrella could be if they're attaching it to their vending stand. So we did add a little bit more clarification, or would like to add a little bit more clarification for that, and I can step you through the language on that. However, the redline, the red lines that were in your packet, I do think we responded to everything requested on some of those. Like, let's see, 556040A4, we did add language in there that would, that added first responders as well into that statement, so not prohibiting them from providing services they need to provide. And we took out some language that would, that stated that we can only check the mobile vendors for compliance with size. So now the language would read that we can make sure that, we can inspect the vending stands to make sure they're compliant with everything within our code. And I did add, I think, the one other item in there talking about, a couple of the items. One was just a clarification for vehicles illegally parked or illegally stopped, just so it was clear on that statement. And, and we also did widen out the sidewalk requirements, because by the time you get the vending stand and customers queuing, it was important to make sure we had enough for that. So it went from eight to 10 feet on that. I think those were the changes that the council had requested from the last meeting. The language we'd like to add, it would be under section, let me see here, get the right page on that. Under operating conditions, 556050, under D, we've talked about sidewalk vendors may have one umbrella, and the umbrella shall not exceed 10 feet in height as measured from the ground to its highest point. We also wanted to put a, a minimum height limit, like we do for our awnings in our downtown for clearance. So we would like to add and shall maintain a minimum clearance of eight feet above any public right-of-way or sidewalk area. And then also add the size limitation. So additionally, umbrellas may not exceed 40 square feet in, in area. So 40 square feet would be about a seven-foot diameter, roughly seven-foot diameter umbrella. The other language in there did talk about it having to be attached and affixed to the vending receptacle itself. Can't be attached or mounted to the sidewalk in any, any way, or a bench or anything like that. So I think we did cover the majority of, of some of the concerns that might have been brought up with that. So that would be the recommended language to add this evening, and as well as accept the redline changes from the last meeting, unless you have other questions.
Well, so, yeah, I have a comment. So you said diameter, but seven by, wouldn't that be 21 square feet if it's 27 by?
Seven foot diameter. The area is 40 square feet.
Right, so 33.14 times seven is 21.
You do, for the area of it?
Yeah.
You didn't have to multiply that by pi and get the?
It's the radius.
So it gets you 40?
Yeah. Roughly, well, seven foot's almost like 30, it's 38 some.
Okay. So my comment I'm going to make is that, I looked at all my comments, and I know Leo probably looked at all his comments. Some of them you looked at, and, and I was okay with not changing some of it, it didn't make sense. One about the insurance policy, they got to meet our standard, whatever that happens to be, so you don't want to detail it in here because you don't want it to conflict. So all the stuff I had concerns about, you addressed, so I'm okay with it. I know Leo had a bunch himself.
I just have one question, well, actually two, but one about what you just said. Does the umbrella have to be attached? I know it can't be attached to the sidewalk or a building or anything else. What if you had it in one of those 3,000-pound bases, like I have my umbrella in on my pool deck? Does it, is that okay, or does it have to be physically attached?
It must be attached for fix or anchored to the, to the unit itself.
Okay. My other question is, this is second reading and adoption tonight, if we approve it with the changes.
Yep.
So it becomes effective 30 days from tonight.
Correct.
So anybody in town who doesn't comply, in 30 days are going to get told either change or get out.
Yeah, they're going to be handed a copy of the, so actually we're planning on doing that ahead of time, just so they're not caught off guard on the 30th day. And touch base with them, tell them here's the new ordinance going into effect, would be December 12th, and they need to comply with the ordinance, and if they have questions, come in and see staff.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
That's all I have. Anybody else have any questions? We need a motion to, what is it? Is it if you adopt the second reading or adopt the ordinance?
Waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance with the, with the recommended changes.
So I'll make a motion to waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance with the changes that you just outlined right now.
We have a second? Lost. Oh, here it is. Next item is 3A. Well, this is what our guests were here for. Presentation from the South San Joaquin Irrigation District about the, I love these titles, South San Joaquin Groundwater Sustainability Agency Plan. Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. We appreciate the relationship that the city of Ripon and South San Joaquin Irrigation District have had over the past, let's see, since 2017, when we started this foray as a groundwater sustainability agency between SSJID Ripon and Escalon. We're here today to ask for the council's support of adoption of a groundwater sustainability plan. I'm not going to go into much more detail than that, other than I wanted to introduce South San Joaquin Irrigation District's Water Resources Coordinator, Brandon Nakagawa, who is very well-versed in all things water resources, not only at the county level, but now also becoming an expert locally for South San Joaquin Irrigation District. We're happy to have him on board, and he is going to present some of the work that the county has done over the past couple of years and, and kind of give us a sense of where we are now at this pivotal point, looking for and looking towards adoption of a groundwater sustainability plan in, in our efforts to be in compliance with SIGMA. So thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Last time I was here, I was talking about the drought, and I was with Supervisor Ken Vogel back in 2013. One of the things to come out of the drought is legislation, groundwater legislation specifically. As Councilmember DeGraff knows, I can talk hours and hours about groundwater and GSPs and acronyms, but I'll try to have mercy on you and keep it pretty brief. Again, we're talking about SIGMA, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act of 2014. It's about this thick, probably an inch and a half thick, very convoluted, very prescriptive, and also groundbreaking for the state of California. So again, tonight's presentation will, will try to give you a very brief background about SIGMA and hopefully convince you that we could get your recommendation to the Groundwater Sustainability Agency to adopt this plan we've been working on for the last two years. So what does SIGMA require? SIGMA requires groundwater sustainability agencies must be formed by July 1st, 2017. Hard deadline coded in the statute. One of the things that we did locally here in South San Joaquin Irrigation District, and with Ripon and with Escalon, was formed a single groundwater sustainability agency with our three entities. You have to be a local public agency with water management responsibilities to be a GSA. And we felt it was in our own collective interests to stay together, try to keep our district whole with the cities, partner, and try to find those efficiencies with this new law. And so born was what we call the South San Joaquin Groundwater Sustainability Agency. It's a memorandum of agreement that we've signed and are participating. We have a cost share. We have a governance structure, a, a board of directors made up of members from our own district, your city council, and the Escalon City Council. And we're moving towards formalizing that partnership into a joint powers authority, trying to keep our books, our entity, ability to sue and be sued, and, and our finances separate with that joint powers agreement. That'll probably be coming before your, your council again here in the near future. Another big deadline when we're here for tonight is for critically overdrafted groundwater basins such as ours to have a groundwater sustainability plan or GSP adopted by January 31st, 2020, just around the corner. The GSP will be updated every five years. The GSP has to include broad stakeholder input. Stakeholder is very loosely defined. Just about anyone in the state of California has a say in your plan. And sub-basins have to have this plan in place, and you have to reach sustainability by 2040. So for Eastern San Joaquin Sub Basin, we're talking about a fairly large geographic area, over 800,000 acres, going all the way to the county line in the north with Sacramento County, over to the west in the delta along the San Joaquin River, going south to our, our own boundary here in the Stanislaus River, and over east into the bedrock of foothills in Calaveras and Stanislaus Counties. In total, there are 16 GSAs, and we are all members of a larger, more regional authority called the Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Authority. And we're, our collective agency, the, the GSA, is one of 16 sitting on that board, developing the plan, the GSP, and getting ready to implement it. Failure to meet any of the SIGMA deadlines or reach sustainability by 2040 results in state intervention. Just to give you example of what state intervention looks like, they will, the state will probably come in, take over your planning, tell you what to do, probably tell you you can't pump as much groundwater as you're pumping, and then charge you a huge fee for the pleasure of being regulated. And some of these fees are, are astronomical. As you can see, this is an annual fee for an alfalfa grower with 150 acres. This is his annual fee. For a city, a municipal well could be anywhere between 150, $200,000 per well per year for a city. We do not want the state in our groundwater basin telling us what to do, collecting these fees. These money should stay home, building projects, replenishing our groundwater basin. The law is very, very prescriptive when it comes to what your groundwater sustainability plan should include. And what you need to address is what they call six sustainability indicators dealing with groundwater. These are some very classic chronic lowering of groundwater levels. For example, we all have heard overpumping, overdraft of our groundwater basin is a problem, especially to the north of us with our neighbors. Reduction in groundwater storage, there are some basins who have irrecoverable groundwater storage losses, not ours. Seawater intrusion, if you're on the coast, seawater intrusion is a big problem. Not necessarily a problem for us. Degraded water quality, nitrate, arsenic, naturally occurring, man-made, both, both kinds. Degraded water quality must be monitored and, and other things that go along with management of water quality. Land subsidence, land subsidence, south of here in the valley is, is a big problem. You can lose 20 to 30 feet over the last 50 years of elevation, causing canals and pipes to, to break and flow the wrong direction. And one that is kind of a mystery to a lot of us, but is depletion of interconnected surface waters. What does depleted groundwater do to a river, or a stream, or a pond, or a reservoir, as it loses water to the groundwater basin over time? So to grapple with some of these technical issues, we needed to develop a tool. One of the tools we're using is a groundwater model, a conceptual groundwater model you see to the left. It basically represents all the water type things going on in our community. Irrigation, irrigated agriculture, commercial, industrial, urban uses. Water goes into the, into the ground via our rivers, from the mountains, from other basins, from the delta. But also, we put it back by having recharge, rainfall, runoff. Folks that flood irrigate very near to us with our SSJID water also replenish the groundwater. All of that gets tracked in a very complex tool, and helps us keep track of what we call the water budget. And the water budget is a major tool to help us figure out who's overpumping, who's adding to the basin, who's subtracting from the basin, and what happens when we do something. If we do a project, where we put the project might affect groundwater levels in a certain way. This tool helps us predict that, and it's been very, very instrumental in crafting our groundwater sustainability plan before you today. So when we talk about the model, we came up with a number, a calculated number, which is a target. A target of how much water we need to put back in the ground year in, year out, to reach sustainability. 78,000 acre feet per year is our target, and we need to build projects, do things, conserve our way towards meeting that target using projects that, that are on the books, that are very near to be implemented. Projects that are just concepts and need more work, more planning, more engineering, more funding. And so we have a list of those projects. And it's important because early on, our 16 GSA board said, we don't want to cut anyone's groundwater off. We want to do a forward-thinking plan, an action plan that uses projects to get to where we need to be sustainable, rather than cut, let's add. And so these projects are listed here on the map. These are planned projects, projects that are in the hopper, just about ready to go, and will be done within our, the life of the plan. As you can see, one of the, the major projects here is a water transfer to our friends in the north, which is historically something South San Joaquin Irrigation District has done in the past to keep water locally in the groundwater basin. We've got potential projects, projects that need a little bit more funding, a little bit more engineering. As you can see on the list, hooking Ripon up to the South County Water Supply Project is, is on there, increasing deliveries. Plant that SSJID operates on behalf of its existing customers. If Ripon can get off of groundwater and onto that, that project, we wanted to make sure that Ripon got credit for it. And our GSA got credit for that in the water balance. Same with Escalon. If Escalon does a project to reuse wastewater or to treat to a higher level and then replenish the groundwater basin, we want to make sure Escalon got credit for that. And then to round things out, there's more conceptual projects, projects that need a lot more work, a lot more funding. Things like a full pressurization of SSJID's irrigation system and other types of very long-term, long, long, long timetable-type projects. And so going forward, after we adopt this plan, we need to implement it and administer the plan. So the hope is that South San Joaquin GSA will continue to represent our interests, our collective interests with Escalon. But each GSA individually will implement their own projects. We don't want to be responsible for a project going on in Lodi, and vice versa. We don't want them telling us what to do with our projects. But there is a coordination component. Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Authority, the larger authority with all 16 GSAs in the basin, we should have a check-in process. We want to make sure that whatever projects we do, we get credit for, let's check in and make sure that we have a single voice to represent our entire basin with the state. That's really where the value is of having this larger, 16-member coordinating entity, which is the Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Authority. It's going to cost money. We're not, we're not shy about that. We, we understand it's going to cost money to fund. We're talking about an operating budget for the Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Authority, for its monitoring costs, reporting costs, regional tools and updates, and these things that we've been working on for the last two years, about a million dollars per year budget. We're going through, and it's a very difficult discussion, how to whittle that number down and how to apportion that cost to all 16 GSAs. Very difficult discussion. Not, not, everyone is blessed, the kinds of budgets, the kinds of water, the kinds of management that we have here in our own GSA, in our community. So it's an ongoing discussion, one that hopefully we'll, we'll come to resolution on shortly. I'm going to leave you with this last sort of important warning. This language appears in the, in the GSP, the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And it basically says, if projects do not come out, do not turn out, or for some reason we don't reach sustainability, maybe we have to revisit cutting people off from groundwater, or curtailing their pumping, land following perhaps, things that are more drastic to get to sustainability. This is a very difficult discussion. Hopefully, we'll never have to do this, because the projects will come, they'll get built, and we'll get funding for them. But if, if, if Plan A doesn't succeed, we need to have a Plan B. But if Plan A doesn't succeed, we need to have a Plan B, and this is that warning. So the folks north of us, who are maybe not as blessed with the water supply that's as reliable as ours, they're going to have to invest in dual systems, surface water and groundwater. They're going to have to put water in the ground, they're going to have to invest in the infrastructure, and hopefully we don't have to trigger this onerous condition. To get through the adoption process, I just wanted to make sure that this council knew that we had a forty-five day public comment period of the entire report. We received nineteen comment letters. This city, I think we sent it to the city administrator, a notice of intent to adopt the groundwater sustainability plan, this comes straight out of the statute, we checked that box. We have come up with a matrix of responses to comments, we've made changes to the text based on the comments received, and we were making the GSP available last week, we made that available with all its final changes and a clean copy. There's a copy at our front desk, if anyone wanted to look at it, a hard copy, and you can find it online, I have a link at the end of the presentation. Hopefully, all sixteen agencies will adopt within the next two months. Our adoption date for the South San Joaquin GSA is next week, Wednesday on the twentieth. You might have seen the legal notices that were posted today and last week, Tuesday, by law, we had to report that and make that notice available in the Mantica Bulletin. And we're going to hopefully be early and send off our plan just after January eighth, after the new year, to meet that deadline, January thirty-first, 2020. Some of us have been working on this for a long time, about six years total, since even before legislation was passed, so it's good to see that we are on the eve and on the cusp of adopting this thing and getting on with business, getting our groundwater basin back to where it needs to be. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I do. Thank you, nice presentation. So, a couple of comments you said, like the state takes it over, so we know the state is very genius in everything they do, and very successful with everything they touch, right? So with that said, I have two questions. Does their plan, and if not, does their plan include new dams? And if not, why? And have they been able to justify wasting, excuse me, I mean releasing, the amount of water they do from the existing dams, and letting it go into the ocean, rather than utilizing it for human beings, rather than the fish at sea?
Good question. State has not looked at new dams, will not look at new dams, unless it's part of that program where Proposition One, there was earmarked funding for surface storage, so there's only a select few dams that are slated for either raising or new. Those are not necessarily water slated for our communities. We have existing water rights, we'd like to tap those first, we have existing contracts within the entire groundwater basin that are underutilized, we're looking at those water sources first. And I think you'll find too, that some of these projects that the other GSAs are looking at north of us, far more cost-effective than building a new reservoir, although new reservoirs should be part of a larger portfolio for the entire state, you're absolutely right. The issue of releasing water for fish versus humans, that's an ongoing battle. I think you know where our district stands with the state trying to take our water to supplement their shortfall for fish, or for exports, or for whatever. That's our water for our community, and we're going to fight, have been fighting on that issue.
So again, they haven't been able to say that we release X number of, whatever you call acre feet, and we need to release all that. No, they haven't been able to prove that, but if we release half that much, the fish still live and everything else, correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Park?
Nice job.
Yes, that was a very nice presentation. Can you go back in your slides, go back to one more, actually, several more, so it's right before this, it's where the solutions are presented, right there. So, out of how we meet the need, in your view, because you're in the minutia of this, which do you see as the most effective solution, either in terms of preventing state encroachment into our autonomy to make decisions, or either in terms of the ability to diminish our need to pull out of the groundwater?
Good question. Actually, it really depends, I think, on who you are as a GSA, what your options are. Because if you're a city, or an irrigation district, your options are very different, your drivers are very different. So there is a market for recycled water, from a wastewater treatment plant, or from a winery, or from an industrial user, you know, they've created their own markets for that kind of water. There's funding specific for those kinds of projects, for different kinds of entities. So, one of the big drivers is funding. How do you match up the funding with the project? And I think that's really how, as a larger regional community, the San Joaquin County has gotten their projects done. A lot of times, development has been a big driver, so the City of Stockton, City of Lodi have used developer fees and other user fees to accelerate very expensive projects, like surface water treatment plants and whatnot, and it's something that we've actually done for our customers. When you have other options, where in an agricultural setting, for the dollars per acre foot in cost, maybe you're looking at something much cheaper, and much more affordable, but a farmer paying hundred, two hundred, three hundred dollars an acre foot for recharge water does not necessarily make as much economic sense as, you know, a city paying six hundred dollars an acre foot for treated surface water or development. So, really a driver being funding and user GSA-dependent.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Brandon, for being here. Peter, appreciate it. I know, Brandon, out of anybody you could possibly have come present, Brandon's the guy to do it, because he probably knows more than anybody on the subject here. He's invested an incredible amount of time getting this thing right, both working at the county and then now with SSJID, so appreciate all your work, Peter and the board at SSJID, you guys have been awesome as well. We certainly have a great partner in you guys, and looking forward to where this thing goes. Certainly have some struggles, probably some issues to figure out as far as funding, how everything works going forward, but having been involved in my career, working on this for other agencies as well, I think we're heading in the right direction with it. I know we've all worked hard to get there, and I would make the recommendation that we recommend to our GSA to approve, recommend the adoption of the plan, so I'll make a motion for that at this time.
I'll second that. Appreciate all the hard work.
So this is going to be on the agenda for next Wednesday's meeting, for that board to formally adopt this to the state, or is there another step after that?
There is, that's the big hurdle, is next Wednesday to get this thing adopted, and then forwarded on to our Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Authority on January eighth, that's right.
All right.
So is Escalon adopting this yet?
Next Monday, I'll be at the city council.
I can't keep, I mean, I sit on that board, and I can't keep track of this. You're right, he does it.
We gave you direction to vote, and affirmative next week.
Thank you, now I know.
I just want to make sure we introduce the Chair of the South San Joaquin GSA, Bob Holmes, Director of SSJID, so he's actually keeping us in line, the staff.
Does a pretty good job.
Runs the tax check.
Yes, he does. Any other questions, comments? Appreciate the presentation, gentlemen, thank you for all your work, and we'll do everything we can to support the effort to get this thing done. Thanks again. Next item, three B, financial audits. Lisa, you're on.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the audits for the City of Ripon and the money purchase thrift pension plan for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, 2019, have been completed by our auditors, Price Page and Company. These audits are completed to fulfill our requirements placed on us by the state agencies and our bonding agencies. We use an independent third-party audit firm to ensure that we are in compliance with the laws and regulations. They review many of our transactions, our internal controls, and other policies to form an opinion on the financial statements. The City of Ripon Audit is a combination of all of the finances of the city, and the money purchase thrift pension plan is the retirement, non-perse retirement plan for our employees. As noted in the audit committee letters, there were no significant audit findings, no difficulties encountered between auditors and staff, and no disagreements between management and auditors. In my opinion, it was another successful year, and I'm happy to provide the audited financial statements and independent auditors' reports. I've also provided a very detailed staff report in the city council packet that gives a financial synopsis of the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, in terms, charts, and reports that you are used to seeing to help link the financial information you received during the year to the audited financial reports. In that packet, the audited financial statements have been updated, and we did receive an update from Price Page based upon two errors that were found by the diligent council review, so thank you very much. One is a grammar error on page twenty-six, and the other is the date that the independent audit report was actually submitted. So those items will be updated and in the resolutions for December's meeting. No action is required this evening, as resolutions will be brought back at the December meeting for accepting both of these audits. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I went through it, I mean, it is what it is. The question I have though is, they made a recommendation, we recommend the city create, adopt, and utilize its own written procurement sector, you drafted a letter June thirtieth, is that done?
No, we are working on that, and that will become, come before city council.
Something we have to approve, it's not just an internal procedure. Okay, thanks, that's all I have.
Anybody else have any questions? Anyone from the audience that sat and read that whole thing? No. So, at the December meeting, this will come back for us to formally approve or accept the audit report for last year.
Correct. Yes, they will be on the consent calendar as resolutions.
Okay. Looking forward.
Can't wait, I'm with Leo.
Chief, you're up.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report.
No, he warned us it was coming. Ted?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, for my last time, I'd like to report the water usage for last month. We were at down eleven point nine percent from 2013, bringing our twelve-month running average at twenty-four point five percent.
Now wait until my turn. Mr. Stevens, you're up.
Yes, just real quick. I do want to congratulate Ted on his last council meeting, as our esteemed colleague and director for many years with the city. We do also, on another note, had the gazebo painted lower stofa, tan, nice job, earth tone, everything looks good, and turned out well, and then we should have the cracks filled at the tennis courts this week, and that's about it.
Mr. Zeiderbart?
Yes, a couple items. Next Monday, we will be having a planning commission meeting, we have three items on that agenda, if anybody's sitting at home bored watching Monday Night Football, and it's not a good game, come down and join us. We have a project that was continued from the last month's meeting, it's a small project on Acacia Avenue, one of the light industrial lots down there that wants to develop. First Christian Reformed Church on Bosch is looking to do an expansion project over there, and then we do have a parcel map on Miljo, it's for Miljo property. So, that's what we have up on tap for Monday night, and I do also want to kind of echo Kai's sentiments here, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with Ted. We're trying to figure out how to remove his brain and keep it here at City Hall, because there's so much knowledge stacked in there. I stopped by his office several times a day just to ask him questions, and he's such a wealth of knowledge, so he's probably going to get bugged by us a lot, but I do appreciate working with you, Ted, it's been a pleasure.
Mr. Peace will be the chief bugger of Mr. Johnson for the next few months, I would imagine.
Don't get on your cell phone, Dan.
Yeah, I guess to continue that, Ted, just thank you so much for everything you've done, not only for me, but obviously for this entire community. Truly an honor to work under someone like you, and appreciate everything you've done. With that, I also have two other things to report on, Dan, maybe you can help me out? Okay. I just wanted to brief the council on a couple of different things going on right now with recycling and the state of California. So what you see up here is three different assembly bills, they're fairly recent, and they're affecting not only the city of Ripon, but more importantly, the businesses within the community, and what they're obligated to do. So, hold on to the next one here, Dan. So these assembly bills, this first one is AB 341, basically this bill requires businesses that generate four cubic yards of solid waste per week, or multi-family dwelling with five or more units to recycle. This was passed in 2012, and then these are the items that they are required to recycle. Although this took place in 2012, not all businesses are in compliance, but recently, very recently, the state has, and Cal Recycle in particular, has come down on these businesses, they've come down on the cities to make sure that these businesses and these multi-family dwelling units are in compliance. The next one here, there you go, the next one here is 1826, so this is the mandatory commercial organics recycling, this came into effect October of 2014. This one's a little different, over the years, it just basically encompasses more and more businesses, the threshold gets lower and lower, so more businesses are falling into what they're being required to recycle, and then on this next slide here, is what they're required to recycle. And then this next slide here, Dan. So what the city has been required to do, basically, with these assembly bills, is provide outreach, education to the businesses, we've been doing this for a number of different years, this, what you see here is a flyer that we send out to all of the businesses every year, any new business that comes into town, and it basically goes over these two assembly bills. Shows the thresholds, shows what they've got to recycle, and our goal really is to just help these businesses get into compliance. So up until this year, this is the first year that folks are really required to be in compliance, we have, I'd say that compliance rate, I guess, has been fairly high on the recycle side, but the organic side, most people, or most businesses are lacking, and the biggest reason they're lacking is the infrastructure is just not there. There's really no place to take a lot of these organic materials. The grass and yard waste stuff is something that's easy to recycle, but all of this food waste, the places that you could take them are just not set up to take it, so. Basically, we're just working with the businesses, trying to get them into compliance. And then this next one is AB 1383, so this is a whole different type of bill, it was just approved in 2016. This bill brings with it enforcement, penalties, very stringent regulations, and those regulations will be adopted in, we're estimating, January of 2020. Their goal is seventy-five percent reduction in the level of statewide disposal of organic waste from the 2014 level, so a very, a very high goal there. And then on this next slide here, this is just kind of a glimpse of the regulation.
And then on this next slide here, this is just kind of a glimpse of the regulations, and then what's that final set is, is out, was that set of regulations is out, I'll be coming back to, to share with council what that really means to the city of Ripon, our businesses, and, and how, how we're gonna move forward with this. I think the biggest thing here is that last item, there you see rate impacts, this is gonna affect everyone from the residential side, and, and just more and more on, on the commercial side, so. Just wanted to provide council with the update on kind of what's coming, so. And then the other thing I wanted to report on is the, the amount of money that we have spent to date preparing for potential power shut-off from PG&E. So to date, we have spent thirty-one thousand dollars on renting generators. If we, if we project out through December, we're looking at close to forty-five thousand dollars. So our, our plan next year, early next year, is to bring back to council kind of our recommendation moving forward, we also wanna bring in PG&E, bring in Dylan George, the representative, and, and hopefully explain to the council of the community what, what, what their infrastructure looks like, kind of what the, what the risks are, kind of looking forward, but just wanted to provide council with an update as, as where we're at right now, so.
So, are we gonna stop the leases? I mean, at some point, we don't need that, right?
Right, I, I would say right now, we're, we're definitely looking at through November, based on the weather and, and where they're at, I think we'll have to evaluate early, early December and see where we're at, with, with the, with the weather, with the weather. We'll be working with PG&E on what they gotta deem, you know, that risk being mitigated, but I'm anticipating at least through.
But it's safe to say that we will have spent forty-five thousand dollars essentially for nothing, because we did not ever need backup power.
Yes, you could look at it that way, yeah.
Okay, because it's gonna be an interesting discussion when Mr. George is here. From at least one of us. Thank you. Ms. Quillistee?
I, I just wanna say thank you, Ted, you know, it's been really nice working with you and just seeing your passion you have for the community, so, but nothing else to report at this time.
City attorney, have anything? Wow. Mr. Werner?
As you can see by everyone's comments, Ted is retiring very soon. Ted has been amazing to work with, I, I think he's a role model for all of staff, and I, I know the council always appreciates Ted, and the community appreciates Ted, so he is gonna be sorely missed.
But we do know where he lives. Mr. Eucher?
I think we should all be saying, poor Mr. Peace is gonna have to try to replace Ted, I feel more sorry for you, Ted's gonna go away and not have to worry about nothing. I used to call, I called Ted a lot, and he's always been very helpful, he's, he's a wonderful person, and he's been a great guy to work with, yeah. We'll be, he'll be, will be missed, but I still will call him anyway, because I gotta sell him.
Mr. DeGraff?
As I said earlier, you should probably change your cell number, if you wanna talk to us, but, yeah, I mean, it's pretty obvious you've made a, a huge impact on the city over the past, in your career working here, so we appreciate everything you've done and look forward to a happy retirement for you, so, congrats and thank you. To the members of the public, thank you for being here, appreciate it.
Couple things, Chief, well, Chief, you were in the military, but we had a very nice Veterans Day event yesterday, and I counted a hundred-plus people, so I think it turned out nice, and the whole event was good. I didn't know this was your last meeting, Ted, I thought it was next month, but, you know, Kevin said something, being a role model, you know, you, I run a very large company and own a very large company, and I gotta tell you, my people are like you, have ownership into the company, I mean, you think you kinda own the city, the way you act, the way you work, you know, you get a phone call, I've called you seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, and you've always been there, every event that goes on, you're at, I don't know how, you know, James, you got huge shoes to fill, and we're looking forward to you filling those, but you have been a great role model, you are a great person, and even though you're retiring, you still only get two weeks vacation a year, which means you can't leave the city more than a week at a time, twice a year, that's it, you gotta be around, because we know we're gonna need you for something. So, now, seriously, congratulations, I'm, I'm really happy for you, and thank you for the friendship.
Vice Mayor Parks, for the last time.
Yeah, for the last time, so, yeah.
No, he's moving a chair.
Yeah, I gotta move a chair, so, no, Ted, thank you very much, you've always been very, very helpful to me whenever I've come in and have questions, and it will be the Ted Johnson Corp. Regard.
What? I have one question, and then I will join the crowd. The water rules changed November first, but in driving around, I noticed there are a lot of people who haven't figured that out yet, is our guy out doing his job?
Yes, yes, he is. I'll answer that for the last time. Charlie is, and then we're also, next, next week, we're gonna have volunteers overtime for our public works to go out and look for folks' water on the wrong, wrong days.
I figured, I just wanted to bring it up, give you one last chance to talk about water. And I'm not gonna repeat everything that everybody else has said, because it's not necessary, but I've been in this town for, I think, over forty years, and as I've told several other people, as word got out that you were retiring, that I don't think there's a person in this town that has not been involved in some sort of public activity that can deny the fact that probably ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, that activity would not have occurred as successfully as it did without you, because any time that the city was involved, there were always things that come up, problems, or needs, or whatever. Most of the time, you anticipated them ahead of time and they got taken care of, but when they didn't, you were the first guy that was there, and the last guy that was there to make sure that it was a success, and James has got some big shoes to fill, I don't have no doubt that he can, but you have set a standard in this town as far as what the city, the role the city is to play, and we've gotta make sure we uphold that. You've done a hell of a job, and I, and along with the rest of us, want you to realize that we realize and deeply appreciate all that you've done. What? Anything, that's it?
That's it.
Meeting adjourned, thank you all for coming.